Was that?
Warren.
Okay. And then can you pull up the EIF?
Yes. Delmar.
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
How's she like? She's like it out in Delmar? Delmar's nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, let's, we're gonna scroll through the part one, just so people can see it.
She left that on her channel? No, not yet. No, she doesn't really.
All right, Warren, so we're gonna go through the EIF now, right?
Yes, she does.
Oh, you're muted.
She loves her challenge.
You're still muted.
Um, we did get an email from our engineer, maybe we should read that into the record?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Which, which one was that?
Um, I think I only got one at one eleven today.
One today?
Do we got more than one?
No.
Oh, about are there any seeker issues?
Yeah, I think that should be right into the record.
Oh, yeah, we'll get that. Okay, let's do that.
Thanks, I can just. I got it on my phone.
No, no, it's a second. It's a different one.
Do you have it, Trish?
Yeah, I have it. Do you have it, Ethan?
Oh, thank you. Is this the one?
One eleven today? Is that the one you want?
Uh, at one eleven, yeah, I'm looking at the part, did he submit a full environmental? He submitted a long form environmental assessment form. Okay. The, the action is not, is not described properly, it's it should, uh, he's describing as a two-stage development and a boundary line adjustment, it's I think the only application before the board right now is just the boundary line adjustment, isn't it?
Didn't he, that's when he redid the application, he didn't submit?
He would ask me to do it this way.
No. I asked, I mean, yeah, we have to change that brief description, the proposed action.
Yeah. Just, it's just a boundary line adjustment.
Two-stage mountain adjustment. And we don't mention the possible future one at all, Warren?
Well, I think we have, I think that's in the record, but we don't have that application before us right now, so
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I would imagine that if and when he decides to do a further subdivision, then all of these issues will be reviewed fairly comprehensively by the planning board before any subdivision approval is uh, granted. The only thing that we have to deal with tonight is just the lot line adjustment. So, which I'm not even sure is subject to environmental review. I didn't check the seeker reg, but let's assume it's a it's an unlisted action under seeker, it's certainly not a type one action under seeker.
So don't we normally just do a, uh?
For, for this application, a, a, a short form environmental assessment form would have been fine, I don't know when this was submitted. But I just don't want the description to be erroneous.
Okay. So how do we fix this? We print it out and write on it or?
Yeah, we should, we should mark it up, so it's not a two-stage development, it's only a boundary line adjustment application.
I'm sorry.
And cross out everything else. Can, can you just lift that up so I can see the date of this part one? Scroll it up. Yeah, let, let, let me just take a look at this for a second. Yeah, see, the, the only agency that has approval over this is the planning board, Dutchess County Health Department and the highway department, well, the highway department would approve. The health department doesn't, I, I don't think has any approval over this.
So you think we need to just print out a short form, he needs to fill that out?
He should have, he should have used a short form, but it's okay, we can deal with it.
This is from July nineteen.
Yeah. I think at that time, he was contemplating a, a six lot subdivision, wasn't he?
Oh, no, this is when he changed, it's been going on since then, so he just has, he has both things attached to this document.
Yeah. He, he just didn't fill it out correctly, that's all.
Alright, so you want me to just mark it up?
Yeah, just mark it up because the part one is your responsibility, so.
Only a boundary line adjustment.
That's, that's correct, that's the only application I'm seeing before the board.
Alright, so should we keep scrolling, and what, you had other agencies?
Yeah, he doesn't, he doesn't need Dutchess County Health Department approval, there, there's already a well on that property.
Already there.
And there is, is an existing driveway of uh, the only thing we need is the driveway maintenance agreement.
And you, you have that, right? He sent that?
No, he didn't send it, he, he sent a brief description, but he didn't, he didn't send me a, uh, uh, a maintenance agreement and reciprocal easement. Uh, I, I, I'm not gonna tell him how to do that, he's gotta retain the services of a of a professional to help him with that, but that's, I'm not gonna approve that.
So this is just, you're, you're saying, can you pull this up? Is that possible?
I'm sorry, I'm making you click away here.
Are you, are you describing this thing that says whereas a driveway currently exists?
Yeah, that's, that's not a driveway, no, no, I'm, I'm not gonna approve that.
Okay, so.
I, I mean, it's done, it's done all the time, and you had one Dale Mitchell did it, uh, uh, Jim Murphy did it, I mean, I I, I can't, I'm not gonna advise Mr. Birch on how to make his application, but that's what I'm gonna see before I sign off.
So his attorney should just send you what?
Well, he needs two things, it's in the resolution.
I understand.
When you do a, when you do a, uh, a boundary line uh, agreement like this, you have to have, um, if, if you look at the resolution that I prepared.
No, I understand, I'm just talking about
Oh.
How are we doing it?
This is not a shared driveway agreement, I don't know, it's just kind of a blur, you know?
Okay, so he, he needs the shared driveway agreement slash easement. And, um,
And that's gotta be.
Saying that his attorney should be able to send it to you, and then you guys will go back and forth and get it right, no?
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past, they, they, whoever the attorney or, or surveyor uh, uh, sometimes prepares them, and I, I redo them and I approve them.
Driveway agreement, maintenance agreement, and an easement to go over.
Oh, choose them.
And that's endless.
I mean, if you want to take a look at some of the existing subdivisions that were been, have been approved on file, get an idea of what he needs to do.
But I mean, a land use attorney should be able to know.
Well, yeah, a land use attorney.
Or whatever.
And then I, and then I need merger deeds. Uh, and that's, uh, that's described in the resolution in paragraph three. So before I sign off on this, I'm gonna need those documents submitted to me. Otherwise, uh, I think we're fine, and, but we should read into the record our engineers' comments on this.
Alright, so do you wanna do that before going over the EIF?
Sure, I can just read it. Uh, the, the email we received from George Schmidt from CPL states as follows, the site distance issue is one for the county DPW and New York State DOT to address as it is their road, not the town-owned road. The planning board is only looking to approve the lot line adjustment at this time, not the full lot sub, six lot subdivision. That being said, a six lot subdivision will constitute a realty subdivision, and that does require uh, the drilling of a test well, so in the future, if Mr. Birch wishes to pursue the six lot subdivision, he will need to present to, to the planning board uh, fully designed uh, and health department-approved septic plans, results for the test well, possibly a full stormwater pollution prevention plan, and driveway permits from DCDPW. Um, so if and when he decides to do something more than a lot line adjustment, all of those things are gonna have to be submitted and approved by our town engineer and the planning board. And, uh, the, the master plan comments, I think you dealt with quite ably tonight, that uh, they, they simply, uh, I think they were quoting from the old master plan, not the new master plan, but the master plan is not what governs the application, if the property meets the, uh, our sub, our subdivision regulations and our code, uh, that's what's important. Our code has to be consistent with our master plan, but not every application has to uh, meet every requirement of, of the comprehensive plan or master plan.
Got it. Um. Alright, can we pull back up the EIF? Alright, so we're gonna keep going through the CAF, Warren.
If, if you want, it's, yeah, it's, it's a bit more than we nor, normally need, but let's, let's do it.
Well, I just wanted to make sure there's nothing in it, I don't wanna prove something that we haven't gone over.
Yeah. It, it, it probably should have just submitted a short form, yeah.
Um, so we're down to, we did that, okay, so what does this say here, planning and zoning actions? That's fine, right? C one is fine?
Yeah, I, I don't know how we feel, to be honest, how we feel this thing, uh, um. Hmm. Uh, yeah, C, C one is okay. Um, let's see. Open, no, that's.
Here's, actually, here's another, how about this? How about we print out a short form?
Yeah, I, I, it'd be much easier to deal with this on a short form.
Go through this giant thing.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, there's so much more information in here than we need for a, a minor lot line adjustment. Uh, it's just, it's just, it's, it's gonna be torturous, so my suggestion is um, if Trish can supply the applicant with a short form environmental assessment form, and let the applicant fill that out, we can vote on it at the next meeting.
What, the next meeting?
The next meeting.
Uh.
Well, I mean, unless you wanna go through the, the full environmental assessment form.
No, I, I think well, the short form, he could probably fill that out now, maybe if we move on to another subject and then.
Yeah, it takes about ten minutes, you know?
Yes, well, that, that's what I think would be probably reasonable.
It's, it's so much easier to deal with.
We're not.
If he comes back with a six lot or five lot subdivision, then he's gonna have.
It's not part of.
Full environmental assessment. I'm sorry, I didn't.
We're on this. Right, and we can't, how many is it, like, two pages, right?
So just three.
Yeah. So if you wanna give him the short form form, and he, he can fill it out now, we can go over it, get rid of this.
Condition that you'll give us that to Warren and then.
Yeah, those two items are in there.
Right.
Buddy, we have to have this before we receive. Um, in the meantime, we're gonna take a pause on that. Um, and I would like the solar law comments.
Sure.
Can you print more information, please?
I did.
Um, so I, I don't know if anyone got to look at so the solo is going to the town board, uh, I believe, this, uh, this month, uh, for approval, we, uh, last month, we, we got the law and, uh, asked for comments from us, but we, we didn't even have that many of us here, and, you know, it was kinda like, we didn't um, go ahead with that at that time, and I drew up these comments. Um, alright, so I don't, I don't, actually, let me, so, I wanna go over, so Dutchess County, everyone saw the Dutchess Planning Department review it, and the only comment they had on it. Um, let's see, the proposed local law is well-written and appropriately adopts a tiered system for approving the installation of solar energy systems with more strict regulation limited to larger solar farms that are proposed to produce electricity for use off the subject property. Section D six provides for a maximum lot coverage limit. Uh, this restriction seems excessive and may just cause solar farms to use additional acreage and increase the cost of, for, cost of producing energy while not providing additional protections for the town. Solar arrays do not cause the type of runoff increases that are usually targeted by lot coverage limits because they do not cover the ground with imperious ser, services. Recommendation, the department recommends the board rely upon its own study of the facts in the case with due consideration of the above comments. Obviously, they're referring to the town board. Um, and I don't know, if, if you guys looked at the solar law, it is, the lot coverage is twenty percent um, under seventy acres and thirty percent for seventy acres and above. And the zoning review committee met with uh, representative from the industry who described the projects, and there was also some training we've received from uh, the planning, uh, different, you know, planning training that we've been through. And what, uh, the reason for that lot coverage limit being set that way was when the committee did its work, the solar law committee did its work, one of the main things that people worried about was maintaining the rural character of the community, et cetera, and, you know, large trucks of land with, you know, the vistas as you're driving through or where you live, not looking at this giant solar field. So the larger the piece of land, the more they'd be able to tuck it behind a hill, giant trees, et cetera, and not, uh, be able to be screened from view. It also has the, the effect, and they kinda hit it here, like, of you might be incentivized to create a bigger parcel of land, so thereby reducing, uh, subdivisions and, and that sort of. Um, and also in the law, you'll notice that we in, provide, uh, the law provides for, uh, encouraging agriculture being continued, uh, there's like this solar, ag solar things, where they, they lift the solar panels up and animals can graze underneath, and et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, also encourage the them to use the remaining land that's not part of the actual installation to be continued to use for agricultural purpose. Um, alright, so, there, well, here are my comments. Dear Supervisor Walsh and Town, Walsh and Town Board members, having reviewed and discussed the proposed solo law for the town of Pine Plains, here are the official comments of the planning boards. The planning board believes that the solar law will be a benefit to the community. It will allow homeowners and businesses to use solar energy on their properties while with reasonable regulation in order to minimize impacts on surrounding neighbors. The tier three section of the law will allow our community to participate in the national renewable energy effort. The law provides for a rigorous and detailed process for a company to apply to build a solar generating facility. It also provides for flexibility and reasonable guidelines that will not hamper those that wish to engage in this, in this business. It also provides for robust protections of the community in order to maintain our rural character and natural beauty and viewsapes while not overburdening applicants, which is in accord, which is in accordance with the goals of the comprehensive plan. Additionally, it encourages the continued use of the parcels used for solar farms and agriculture, which clearly aligns with our community's character. We have examined the comments from the Dutchess County Planning has submitted in regards to the law. Oops. You're not the planning bar. Uh, the planning board feels that the lot coverage regulations will not discourage the building of solar farms within our community. The lot coverage requirements were constructed for, with input from companies in the industry and by examining the lot sizes in our town. The planning board understands that the, that lot coverage regulations will encourage let's see, the that the lot coverage regulations will encourage the preservation of larger parcels, which will make it easier to place and screen the facility and thereby preserve the rural character of the community and therefore in line with our comprehensive plan. The planning board would, could see a discretionary flexibility clause being added to a lot coverage requirement. For example, it would be reasonable for the planning board at its discretion to be allowed to add four percent to the lot coverage requirement if it would not have any visual impact and would not eliminate agricultural operations on that land. That being said, we do not need to necessarily do that, do so at this point. We can see how the process goes, and if the lot coverage is an issue as the applications arrive. We would definitely advise not doing that, meaning not, uh, adding this clause, if the additional language would cause any further delay in voting on this important legislation. The community is waiting on this legislation, and it has been a long and drawn-out process exacerbated by the pandemic getting to this point. Thank you for initiating our comments. And I, and I received many calls and emails every week about, you know, when can I put my uh, ground, so even the homeowners with ground, mountain solar, companies interested in building solar plants, and, or. Um, so I guess I need a motion to that we send these to the town board as with the minor corrections.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Comments? Good? So Warren, that should do, uh?
Yeah, that should, send me a copy of that. So I just checked the seeker regulations, and, uh, actually, lot line adjustment, uh, which is what's before the board tonight is what's known as a type two action under seeker does not require environmental review, so we don't need an environmental assessment form. If and when he comes back to the board with anything in addition to this lot line adjustment, then it will be subject to environmental review.
We don't.
Need to do the surf.
No, I cha, I changed, I changed the resolution accordingly. And I can read you the changes that I made.
Uh, do you know which one?
Which? Which section of the seeker rec?
No, no, I see it, no, I'm just talking about where in the resolution.
Yeah, what I've done is, um, I made a couple of changes to what I sent you. So the one, two, three, four, five, six, whereas clause, I've changed to read, the planning board has determined to conduct a public hearing for this applicant, cuz we did, um, and has required the applicant to prepare an agricultural no, it's not damage, it's a data statement. Data statement. Uh, so the rest would be the same. Uh, and then the only other change would be on the second page, and I'll send you a revised resolution for you to sign. Uh, and whereas the planning board has determined that this lot line adjustment application is a type two action under seeker and does not require environmental review. And what I'd like you to do is to add that paragraph that you sent to me this afternoon to the resolution.
Yeah, we did have it on our copy, it's in, it's in on our copy.
Yeah, add that, I thought that was a good paragraph to add.
Um. Alright. I just, okay, so we're not officially gonna go through these questions, but I want the community to hear what the considerations would be if we were to do this seeker assessment form, now, we're not required to because the type action by the state as Warren said. But, and just think about like, what a lot line adjustment do and how we would likely answer these questions. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use, and again, we're only talking about this one lot line adjustment, making that one parcel a rectangle. Uh, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on any environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure or mass transit, bikeway, or walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunity? Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies? Public-private waste treatment facilities? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic architectural, arch, sorry, archaeological or architectural or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources, example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? So, those are questions for, now, Warren, just, again, we're talking about the, not what we're considering tonight, but if he were to go ahead with the subdivision, what type action is that?
That would be a, uh, what we call a type one action, if it's gonna add five additional lots, which would then require a full environmental assessment form and a more complete, and it would be subject to a fairly intensive environmental review.
And that would hit all those questions that we, you just.
Yeah, but all of those, all of those questions that you read would be answered in the negative with regard to the with regard to the lot line adjustment.
Right, but I wanted, I, I'm just, because of the switch, I wanna make sure they understand, the public understand what's going on. And, and so those, and a lot of, if you notice, a lot of those topics were things you guys brought up. Right, so those are all things that would have to be answered and dealt with. With reports from Mr. Birch, and then from our experts, we go over his reports. And then we would, uh, have public hearings, and then we would go through these questions in a much longer form in a fully F review, and, uh, and before we, we, we think about making a decision on that. So just, so, but now getting back to the issue at hand, this one lot line adjustment, moving the map, creating that part rectangular parcel, uh, obviously, the lot line adjustments in general don't need, uh, don't, do not require a secret review for us, so. But that said, Kate, can I borrow your copy since you made the corrections? I'm going to now read and you have my, is this have my, uh, my, no, you don't have that, so I'll make sure I put that. So. Okay, so when I get to the end of page one. Alright. I'm just gonna drink some water. Okay, so Town of Pine Plains Planning Board, resolution approving the proposed minor subdivision slash boundary line adjustment for the property of David Birch. Because of the law, it's considered a minor subdivision, whenever you do a lot line adjustment, even though it's just a lot line adjustment, the law considers it a minor subdivision, so we have to call it that. Again, the other part, project would be a major subdivision. Uh, alright, whereas Da, David Birch is the owner of two parcels of land consisting of approximately twenty-four point one-five-two acres located on County Route fifty-nine in Dutchess County, identified as parcels Two-seven-two-four-four-zero and two-two-zero-four-zero-zero N. Whereas Birch has submitted a proposed minor subdivision boundary line adjustment plant plat. Require, uh, prepared by our Sardo Land Surveying Services, P L L C dated January eighth, two thousand two. And revised on October fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Wait a minute, wait a minute, that, was that, is that the right date for the, the map?
That's what I took off the map, I.
Two thousand and two or two thousand twenty-two?
It should be twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, so twenty twenty-two and revised on October fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Whereas the proposed application seeks to merge. One A and parcel one A and parcel one B, as shown on the map into a single parcel consisting of three point seven eight two acres. And merge parcels two A and two B into a single parcel consisting of approximately twenty point three seven zero acres N. Whereas the app, the said application, if approved, will result in a single shared driveway servicing the newly formed three point seven eight two parcel. And tax parcels two A and two B, as shown on the said subdivision map. And whereas the said subdivision map and application were reviewed by the planning board in accordance with the provision. Of section two thirty-eight of the town code at. At the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two and October twelfth, twenty twenty-two planning board meetings. And whereas the planning board has determined to, has determined to conduct.
Conduct a public hearing, you know.
Yeah, oh, sorry, to conduct, uh, public hearing for this applicant. But has required the applicant to prepare an agricultural data statement in accordance with the requirements. Of section two eighty-three A of the town law and the town code, and has provided notice of said application to all owners of farmland. Within the agricultural district in which the property is located within five hundred feet of the boundary line of said property. As required by section two eighty-three A, uh, subsection four of the town law. And whereas the planning board has referred this application to Duchess County. Department of Planning and Development for its comments pursuant to section two thirty-nine of the general municipal law. Whereas the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development has advised the planning board that the application is a matter of local concern. Whereas the planning board has received and considered comments on the said application from adjoining owners and farms. And what, whereas the planning board has been informed that miss, that Birch intends. In the future to further so, subdivide the property into a total of five subdivision lots at a later date. And. Whereas the planning board recognizes that any approval here, given herein. And any secret determination reached only pertains to the minor subdivision lot line adjustment described above. And does not confer any approvals or secret determinations regarding the possible future. Five lot subdivision or any other possible future applications concerning these parcels. And whereas the planning board has determined that this lot line. What is it?
Adjustment.
Application.
Oh, sorry, well, uh, line adjustment application is a type two action under seeker. And does not require the preparation of a draft. Oh, sorry, for significant environmental impacts and does not require the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. As a result, and as a result, has issued a negative secret.
No, 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 we're, we're not. Let, let, let me just read the way it should read. I'm sorry, it's my, it's my, I should have corrected it. Has determined that the lot line adjustment application is a type two action under seeker and does not require environmental review.
Whereas the proposed subdivision map and application submissions have been forwarded to the attorney. To the town and to the engineer for the town, George Schmidt of C P L for their review and comments. Now therefore be it resolved that final, that final subdivision lot line adjustment approval is hereby granted for the Birch application. Subject to the following terms and conditions, that all fees for engineering and legal consulting services rendered to the planning board in conjunction with the review of the application. And all filing and recreation fees be paid in full prior to the signing of the subdivision plat by the chairman. That Birch shall cause to be prepared and subject, submit a right-of-way and easement agreement and maintenance agreement. For the shared driveway at access, uh, driveway. The two newly created lots in the form, in form and substance. Acceptable to the attorney to the town upon such, and upon such approval shall file the right-of-way and easement agreement. In the office of the Duchess County Clerk with proof of said filing to the planning board chairman and attorney to the town. That Birch caused to be prepared a merger deed, merging parcels one A and one B into single. Three point seven two acres.
It should be, uh, into a single three point seven two acre parcel.
Well, it's three point eight seven two. Uh, three point seven, uh, sorry, three point seven eight two acre. Parcel and a proposed merger deed, merging parcels two A and two B into a single lot of twenty point. Three seven zero acres and submit the same to the attorney to the town for his approval. And a, and, and upon such approval, the said merger deeds filed in the office of the Duchess County Clerk prior to. Or simultaneously with the filing of the subdivision plat.
We get it.
So, uh, thank you for that. Uh, alright, so. We're now going to take a roll call, first of all, can I have a motion to accept this resolution with the. Uh, you know, stated conditions?
Second.
Alright, so can we have a roll, roll call vote, uh, Kate?
Yes.
Yes. And I also vote aye. Uh, so that the resolution is passed unanimously for the approval of the slot line adjustment.
Okay.
Let's see, Warren, no, I think we're.
You need me for anything else?
No, we, we do not. Thank you, Warren.
Okay, good night. See you guys soon. Keep well.
Thank you. Thank you of all members of the public, your input into this matter. Thanks for coming out. It's good to see people in person and everything now. Okay, the other thing we have on here is, um, the minutes, but, you know, I, I must admit, I never got a chance to really. I wanna go over these. I wanna make sure that these are right before I. Yeah, so we're gonna have to hold these over to next.
Yes, I mean, I haven't been public, I mean, I know. We're gonna hold this one over, I'll.
We need, we're supposed to do it within like ten days or something. Fourteen, that's two weeks, I always forget ones. This is, um. Yeah, just give it, yeah, that should go back in the file. What?
Answering the question.
The draft?
Yes, you just, you have.
Yeah, I just forgot it was ten days or two weeks.
Sarah. Prior to, yes.
Resolution, I still have, this is other stuff I have to do.
Well, you want, well, we have to make our corrections to resolution. And then, right, we got money. Those, the main thing is have your attorney, talk to Warren, get that straightened out. You are attorney, okay.
I'll talk to Warren.
Alright, so just get it, how he wants it. And, uh, and, and that all, all that has to be straightened out before I, I sign the max.
Sure.
And that's in the code.
Sure.
And the same with the fees and, and, and consultant.
It's been a long, hard road.
Alright, so, um.
I do not, I talked to, um, I did get contact from Stissing Center, they expect to be back next month.
Okay, we have to do a site visit, we, I'll talk to you about it, I wanna, uh, we gotta arrange a site visit, we're supposed to go down there and have them give us a tour. So we'll, I'll do it. Thank you, Drew.
I think we're gonna lose our, um.
Thank you, Al, thank you, Scott.
Hey, Drew? When are you in the office again?
Saturday.
Saturday?
Ten to noon.
Okay, alright.
Everyone, I don't know where everyone is with their sexual harassment training. Alright, so it. The second, the second link is just.